Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June eighteenth meeting of the Long Island School Committee. Per Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. While this committee meeting, the school committee is using Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on channel twelve and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as practical after the meeting. And just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you for that. So this is the one time each year that a superintendent able to kick off the meeting. But we quickly reorganize and turn the meeting over to a chair. I want to welcome Nicole Schwanier as the newest member of the Long Island School Committee. Welcome. And with Nicole's arrival on the scene, we will, we need to reorganize the school committee to appoint a chair, vice chair, and to consider committee assignments. So my lone task at this point is to entertain motions for the position of Chair of the Long Island School Committee.
I move that the school committee appoint Ryan Kelly as Chair of the School Committee for the twenty twenty-one school year.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Diane, I believe at this time I entertain additional to see if there are additional nominations. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other nominations? Anyone else want to make a motion to nominate someone for the position of Chair of the Long Island School Committee? Okay, I'm hearing no other nominations. We had a motion to appoint Ryan Kelly as Chair of the Committee. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I can call for a vote. And this needs to be a roll call vote. I'll go by order of the way folks are appearing on my screen. Start with Bronwyn Monahan.
Yes.
Nicole Schwanier.
Yes.
Gianna Allentuck.
Yes.
Ryan Kelly.
I abstain from voting for myself.
I believe so, yes.
All right, I abstain.
Jamie Henge.
Yes.
Kevin Shay.
Yes.
And Suzie Bill.
Yes.
All right, congratulations, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll do a good job, everybody.
If I had a gavel, I would turn it over to you, but congratulations. And now the meeting is yours and the opportunity to, I suppose, entertain motions for Vice Chair.
Exactly. So I have a motion for Vice Chair. Anyone?
I nominate Bronwyn Monahan for Vice Chair for the twenty twenty-one school year.
There's been a motion. Second. Second, I think Kevin got that in first. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Bronwyn.
Abstain.
Nicole.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Congratulations, Bronwyn. We take a motion for clerk. Entertain the motion for clerk. Anybody? Go ahead, Gianna, if you want to make a motion.
I would like to nominate Kevin Shay.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
From Bronwyn. Any discussion?
Yeah, point of information. What does the clerk do?
If you've seen the, the hard work that I've done the entire time, you will read things out loud at our meetings.
Yeah, sitting next to you when we are in person, that's what it looked like, so I just.
Diane would like to add things that apparently I wasn't doing. Go ahead, Diane.
The only thing you do is I will take the minutes and then I'll email them to you for your review and corrections. Yeah. Ryan did a great job.
Thanks.
Can, can I, can I just say something? Kevin, you're just the most organized, detail-oriented person, so I just thought you would be great.
Thank you for that vote of confidence.
No, saying things out loud in the meeting and reviewing the minutes before they get sent to the rest of us, that is the job.
Got it.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Bronwyn.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Kevin.
Abstain.
Suzie.
Yes.
I vote yes myself. Congratulations, Kevin.
Thank you.
So in our packets, you've seen the roles. People are currently serving them on our committees, committee assignments. Two that are required are finance and policy, so it probably makes sense to take care of those first. I'll read to you what's in the packet just so everybody's aware of everything in case it's new to you and for our thousands of people. The school committee chair may choose to appoint individuals to these positions, although some appointments require school committee vote. School committee should appoint by vote of the committee under assigned bi-weekly payroll warrants. Payable warrants. School committee is allowed under the Municipal Modernization Act to designate one of its members to review and approve warrants. MASC suggests appointing a backup person in case of a conflict of interest, such as the person receiving a reimbursement on a warrant or on availability. So is any, this past year, the warrants that were assigned by Jamie with me as a backup and the payroll was signed by me. I'd be happy to give that off if anybody is interested. And Jamie, you want to talk about the job that is signing the warrants and if you'd like to keep it, say so?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would like to keep the warrants and I would also be very willing for the group to do, to do the payroll. And then we can obviously discuss who would be an appropriate backup, given Ryan, Ryan really would not be and should not be my backup at this point. But I'd prefer to be a part of that and be a part of the subcommittee group if the committee still agrees.
So to get our warrants and payroll signees, we need to have a motion. And we have to have a vote on those. Would anybody like to make a motion? Go ahead, Bronwyn.
I move that the school committee designate Jamie Henge to review and approve the warrants and to appoint Gianna Allentuck as his backup.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jamie, did you do it? Gianna, you want to? You have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, like Kevin was asking, what, what does that entail?
Jamie, you want to describe what you've done with warrants?
Yeah, so there's, so there's, so if I, if I weren't able to do it in a timely manner, and it's something that Tom and Tom's organization needed to be signed by, by me or you in this case. It would be a reviewing of the bills and any paperwork that Tom would already have prepared for you. Same thing on a, on a payroll standpoint. So by the time it gets over, after Tom's group and the business office had gone through it, they've already gone through it. They've checked it once. They've checked it twice, three times. You're at a point where you're doing a quick review of it. Anywhere from, you know, on a short, short timeframe, ten minutes, to a long timeframe where there's a significant amount of bills, that's something that they really want you to spend a little additional time on to thirty to forty-five minutes on the long side of things. But it's just making sure that we're, we're paying the bills appropriately after Tom's group's already reviewed.
Okay.
Jamie won't miss, so don't worry about it. Any other discussion on this one? All right, we can do a roll call vote on Jamie and, and Gianna as first and second on the warrants. Bronwyn.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Gianna.
Abstain.
Jamie.
I'll say yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Congratulations. Entertain a motion for payroll, which Jamie already said he'd be happy to do. Motion, anyone?
I move that we appoint Jamie Henge to assign the payroll on behalf of the school committee, and do we need a backup for this?
We do not.
Okay.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Bronwyn.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Jamie.
Abstain.
Kevin.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The school committee is required to vote on who the representatives are for Pioneer Valley Education Collaborative. In your packet, there's a calendar of meetings for the next school year. The Board of Governors, which is the corporation, meets at six P M. And the Board of Directors, which is the collaborative, meets at six thirty. School committee will appoint their representatives by way of a vote. For your rep, the corporation this past year was me. The collaborative was Bronwyn. I can say for the position that I was in that the meetings were far less frequent than the collaborative. It was to review money being spent, where it's being spent, and you can ask questions. You meet with members from the other collaborative districts to go over that stuff. It was, my meetings were far shorter than the ones Bronwyn was involved in and less frequent. So I guess, Bronwyn, you want to talk about yours and maybe state whether or not you'd be interested in continuing?
Yes, this was my second year on the LPVEC collab Board of Directors. And it's, it's a lot to, to learn and I'm, I feel like this second year I learned a lot more than the first year. I would like to continue if there's no one else who's interested in doing it. We meet once a month. And I come back and, and report to you as a committee. And we have a new executive director this year and our next meeting won't be until August.
Anybody have questions for Bronwyn or me regarding the LPVAC and our attendance at these meetings? So I'm happy to give up, although it was really not that time intensive. I'll give it up if anybody'd be interested in learning more about the budget of the LPVAC. Nobody else wanting to talk. Anybody want to make a motion about who should be our appointee to the corporation, which was my position previously?
Ryan, are you willing to continue in that role?
If nobody else wants to do it, I can. But if anybody's interested, you could wave your hand and somebody might make a motion to nominate you.
I'm happy to do it if there's, if you'd rather step back from it for a bit.
Sure. I don't, I don't mind. You do learn a lot of stuff about what the collaborative is spending the money on, so it is, it can be interesting. And like that, the one that Bronwyn's on is a lot more work. So if you want to get to learn it the easier way, this is the easier way. Anybody want to, Bronwyn, go ahead.
I just had a quick question. Well, not a question. Nicole, I was actually going to nominate you, so I'm really glad that you raised your hand. But also, Ryan, last year they had mentioned that you can't have an alternate. So I don't know if we should take that part out. Is that, Diane, is that something that they communicated or no?
No, they didn't communicate, but if you're hearing that, I mean, you wouldn't hear better, more than I. You should take that out of the proposed motion.
Okay.
So Bronwyn, since you're on this right now, you want to do it?
Sure. I move that the school committee appoint Nicole Schwanier to be the school committee representative to the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Governors Corporation.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a roll call vote. Bronwyn.
Yes.
Nicole.
Same.
Gianna.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Like, if I can interrupt this for a second, Nicole, we've heard your last name pronounced three different ways so far. It was an official. I read it as Schwanier, but I would like you to give us the official, so it's not.
You're pretty much exactly on target. Yes, Schwanier.
Schwanier, okay. Thank you. So what else you can learn? Now we need one for the one that Bronwyn was on and has made the plea to continue.
I move that the school committee appoint Bronwyn Monahan to be the school committee representative at the, for the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative Board of Directors Collaborative.
There's a motion. So you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Bronwyn.
Abstain.
Nicole.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So we also have the committee assignments for finance, up the evaluation, curriculum, and all the many committee assignments that are on our, on the sheet that's in your packet. We don't have to pick these right now, but it, maybe it would be a good idea to pick the people or raise your hand if you're interested, please. And being on finance and policy at least, we can get those named. And you can look at the packet, give some thought, and maybe in the next, in the meantime, let me know which ones you'd be most interested in. If there's too many for one, then I'll talk to people, but otherwise, maybe we'll be able to do it. You're just volunteering to me separately. Finance this past year was me, Jamie, and Bronwyn. And policy has a vacancy, so it was Armin, and then Bronwyn and Gianna. So I guess the first question is, is anyone interested in being on finance and policy who have not been? And the people who are currently on it, would you like to continue? Bronwyn or Suzie, I mean, Jamie or Bronwyn, you want to talk about finance? Do you want to continue? Jamie, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bronwyn.
I was just going to say, if, I enjoy working on the finance of committee and the team that's in place. So I'd like to continue that if possible.
I would also like to continue if possible.
Diane, can I ask a rookie question of you and Marty? Am I just appointing these positions? And if there's too many people, then we would have a discussion about it?
The, the chair, if my recollection is correct, and Diane, help me out, has the authority to appoint. But in our, in our experience, it's always been sort of a consensus discussion as well.
Okay, perfect. So Jamie and Bronwyn would like to continue. Do we have one, two, or three other people who might be interested in finance? Anybody? I like being on it. I can tell you that I've, I've been great being with Jamie and Bronwyn on the, with Tom on, on this stuff. If no one's interested, I'd be happy to continue, but I would also be willing to give it up if there's some, if this is, and someone else wants to have a look at. All right, so I guess maybe it'll be the same three. About policy, we have one vacancy and we have Bronwyn and Gianna. Nicole, raising your hand, you're interested?
I would be interested in policy, yes.
All right.
Those room.
Anybody else? Gianna, if you want to continue, Gianna, go ahead.
I would like to continue, please.
Great. Bronwyn, are you still interested in that one?
If possible, just the two major committees being finance and policy. If I'm going to remain on finance, I would like to give someone else an opportunity for the policy.
Anybody else interested in policy?
So I, I would be happy, I mean, I was on policy for a little while. I, I would be happy to do that one. I know, looking down at the other committees, evaluation and curriculum, I mean, I know Suzie's on both of those. And, and I know that Suzie does a lot of work on both of those. So I would be happy to do policy, hoping that Suzie would do some of that other stuff.
Thank you, Kevin. Exactly what I was thinking. I'd like to stay in those.
Great. So we're good with Nicole, Kevin, and Gianna being in policy? Anybody else? So we're good? This is going quickly. You want to do eval and curriculum then, and we'll at least get four committees done? So the eval this past year was me, Suzie, and Bronwyn. Anybody interested? Suzie and Bronwyn, are you want to state your case if you would like to continue? Suzie, saw a thumbs up?
I would like to continue.
Bronwyn.
I would like to continue as well.
Okay. I've enjoyed eval, but if somebody is chomping at the bit, I would be happy to let you do it. It's up to you. Nobody likes my job that I do all day long. Education. All right, looks like we'll keep the same group there. Kill him. Well, this past year was Gianna, Suzie, and Kevin. What is your interest there? Do you three want to continue? Suzie, you're already waving your hand. Yes, you'd like to continue? Kevin or Gianna?
I would like to continue, please.
Right, I would be happy to continue, but I also know that Nicole is very interested in curriculum stuff, so I, I'm happy. I, I don't want to stand in the way if Nicole is really excited about doing that committee.
Nicole. So Nicole, you're interested in curriculum?
I am interested in curriculum, but I'm happy to fill in wherever I'm needed also.
So we'll go with Gianna, Suzie, and Nicole for curriculum? All right.
Thank you, Kevin.
Interest of time. If you think about the other ones, and maybe we can, think, we can come up and discuss them at another meeting, please.
Ryan, can I jump in for a second?
Go ahead, Marty.
So it's not a committee assignment as such, but I wanted to mention that we also have the reopening advisory task force right now. It's Bronwyn and Gianna. And if there's going to be any change, probably this would be a logical time to reconsider that as well, so.
Good point. That's a very timely committee. So Bronwyn and Gianna, are you interested in continuing? I would love to be on that if one of you is interested in not being on it, but I'm not looking to take it from you if you're enjoying yourself.
Same. I'd be interested, but happy to let others do it as well. Same.
Gianna.
So I'm, the expertise of the three that just, that just said that they'd like to be on, I, I'm willing to. I just appreciate all three of you. I, you know, I, I'm willing to relieve my spot to somebody.
Gianna, though, I, I do think you have an important perspective. I, I don't think we can minimize the mental health and social emotional components of what we've been dealing with in this pandemic. So as much as like, I, I'm willing, I, I would not want to take your place on this.
Thank you, Suzie.
You're free.
Go ahead, Bronwyn.
Okay. If, I, I enjoy it, but I think that we have some people that would be great. So I'm more than happy to switch over to one of the people that did also want to be on there.
So it was Nicole and Suzie were the other, were the two? Is that correct?
And I am happy to defer to Nicole, and I'm happy either way, if there's somebody else who.
Happy to defer to both of you, so we're all being very nice tonight. Rock, paper, scissors, Jamie, I think.
Exactly.
Good, Gianna.
Superintendent, can I just ask? If either one, whichever one of them, you know, isn't officially on that task, I mean, we still have the opportunity to offer our input and our thoughts, and because we'll be looking at the minutes coming out of those task force meetings, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I mean, the, the commitment has been to keep the email open. There'll be a survey. We'll publish the minutes. Obviously, any committee member can be in touch with me about anything they want, so. You know, I think that there'll be plenty of opportunities for information to continue to be flowing back and forth, so.
And I'm perfectly comfortable. I think I stated it last meeting. I'm perfectly comfortable with that. And, and, you know, Marty knows I'm not shy about sharing information that I get in, in my role and, you know, just, just to try to, you know, offer my support. So I'm fine stepping back. I'm just offering in case there's a need.
And same, I'm available this summer and happy to help out wherever I'm needed and others. If others are doing work that they're, you know, engaged in and enjoying, then I'm definitely happy to give feedback as, as opportunities arise.
Cool, so everyone's willing to not be on it. Suzie, you were first willing to not be on it, so Nicole and I will be the ones joining it. Does that work?
That sounds good.
All right. If anything changes, we know.
Wait, Ryan, wait, sorry, so.
Yeah, Gianna.
I was going to stay on for the social emotional.
All right, then you have my spot. So it's Nicole and Gianna.
Okay, sorry, Ryan.
Yeah, I definitely concur with that.
Yep, I agreed with that too. So our clerk. Do you have, do you happen to have the correspondence in front of you so we can move on to the next clerk?
I do.
Fantastic, please.
Correspondence included: An email letter from Mr. Lawrence Alt, received June eighth, twenty twenty, regarding the reopening of school in the fall. An email letter from Ms. Erin Lyle, received on June eleventh, twenty twenty, regarding COVID nineteen and reopening of schools. An emailed letter from Mr. John Littleton, received June eleventh, twenty twenty, regarding the reopening statement. An email letter from Lori and James Wheeler, received on June ninth, twenty twenty, regarding the reopening of school in the fall. An email letter from Mr. Senkert Matabushi, received on June fourteenth, twenty twenty, regarding curriculum improvements and up-to-date and culturally sensitive materials.
Thank you. The next item are the minutes from our last meeting. Motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the June second, twenty twenty, school committee meeting as presented.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the June second, twenty twenty school committee meeting as presented.
Motion is our second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sitting on, we'll do a roll call. Bronwyn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yeah.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Next up is visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments? Alright, school committee announcements and recognitions. Anyone? Kevin?
I, I just want to give a shout out to the art teachers at the high school. Uh, the, the students in all the art classes, I think, just did really remarkable work, and I really appreciate the art teachers for putting in the time to share that with the high school community.
Second, uh, Jamie?
Yep, I, same thing. I want to give a shout out to the fifth grade graduation and what, uh, Principal Hutton put together for the, uh, center school fifth graders. It was well beyond my expectations. I, I couldn't believe every single teacher showed up in my house for the entire school. Um, it was pretty amazing. I think the kids, um, absolutely loved it. They were so excited about it and they did it in such a wonderful fashion, so it was great.
Anyone else?
Um, I just wanted to add, uh, the same thing, um, the Blueberry Hill, two of the teachers, uh, came to the house yesterday and brought a sign and T-shirt and just some things to the, uh, fifth graders moving into sixth grade. And it was just an exciting time for all the kids and the parents, and everyone kept social distancing, which was great. Um, and I know it took the teachers, uh, a lot of time at all the schools to do this, but it is very much appreciated by all the parents, uh, and students.
Yes, Jamie?
Yep, I just have, I have one more since it's going on in the room next to me, uh, to just, you know, the dedication of the teachers. Center School Kindergarten is doing their Zoom play in the room next to me right now at six thirty at night. Um, so those teachers have every single one of the kids and every single one of the family members on there. My kid is dressed up like a lion. They were going through every part. They filmed all their parts and somebody put them all together. And they're spending an hour tonight, starting at six thirty, doing an entire presentation. Um, each of the kids got a chance to speak up, then they did an entire thing, so the, the fact that they're doing this at six thirty at night on the, uh, you know, uh, one of the last days of school, should they, they should truly be commended. And to get that many kindergartners in one room should be commended.
That's true. Anyone else? Yes, Marty?
I know, it's, I just want to round it out, uh, the, uh, I know this is not my, my course, the agenda, but, um, similar Wolf Swamp, the, uh, the end-of-year events, the reverse parades and the distribution of the certificates, and then, um, you get a chance, check, uh, at the middle school, each middle school put together a little, uh, transitional website for the rising sixth graders. It's really cool stuff, where the staff introduces themselves and programming in the building to the, the kids who are coming next year, so. And then, uh, high school graduation, uh, is, uh, set for the nineteenth of July. An outdoor event as close to the real thing as we possibly can pull off, so looking forward to that.
Looking forward to that myself. Kevin?
Uh, Marty, maybe this is the appropriate time to ask the question that I asked you by email. Uh, what is the expectation of school committee members with respect to graduation this year?
Uh, so at the risk of offending, um, we may not have room for all of you. Uh, obviously, us, if you're a, a parent, then that's a different story, but, uh, I think the, the staging will only allow for, um, principals, superintendent, chair, perhaps co-chair, I can see if we can do the four, but I think the, the normal arrangement, um, up on stage won't be possible, so if you, uh, attend, we'd have to have the remaining members attend, um, sort of probably, you know, towards the back of the, of the field where it's happening, so. So that's just, I want to, yeah, well, I, I'll clarify that and get w- with some certainty, but I'd say at the most, chair and co-chair on the stage.
Question, Kevin. Anyone else? Alright, our next item is business with guests, school handbook. Dr. O'Shea will provide the school committee with a summary of the requested changes to the K eight student handbook, and Mr. Dunkley is here to summarize the changes to the LHS student handbook.
We have a K eight student handbook and a nine-two-twelve student handbook. Uh, and Paul Dunkley heads up the process at the high school to revise the high school handbook. And so he is with us here tonight to go over the changes. Uh, in an email to you, I noted that most of the changes are, uh, fairly ordinary, but there was one I thought that might be of interest relating to, um, uh, student attendance, so Paul is with us. I will turn it over to him and he can, uh, say as much as would be helpful to all of you.
Thanks, Marty. I appreciate it. Hopefully you can all hear me, yes? Alright, sounds, sounds good. Or looks good, I should say. So thanks for the opportunity to come before the, uh, committee and present the proposed changes from the student handbook. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna kind of defer to the committee and ask you, how much in-depth do you want me to go in terms of, uh, the process? Uh, and then how far in-depth do you want me to go in terms of explaining each of the changes? I'm happy to do as little or as much as you would like, and of course, I will answer any and all questions that you have for me.
Uh, for me, I think it would be valuable for everyone to hear the process, how you come about the review and the proposed changes.
Sure, sure. So I'm sure, as you all know, that it actually, uh, high school student handbooks, um, have to be reviewed by statute and fellow under, uh, the Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, uh, where the book had to be reviewed by, um, uh, stakeholders, if you will, within the, uh, s- school community. It then had to be go, had to go and be vetted by your school council. And then finally, it makes its way past the principal and to the superintendent and the school committee. Um, so of a process that we use at the high school, and I've been doing this, um, and I'm gonna blame Marty here, because when I was a fledgling teacher at Long Meadow High School, starting my second career, uh, seventeen years ago, he said, hey, Paul, would you like to be on the student handbook committee? Um, so for seventeen years I've been doing this, and for the last fifteen, I've been sharing it. So, thanks, Marty. That's all I gotta say about that. So, uh, the process is this, that we put out an invitation to every student and every faculty and staff member who would like to participate in the process. It typically occurs, um, uh, starting in January and runs until it concludes, you know, whether it's five or six weeks, whether it's eight or ten weeks, it depends on uh, the scope of what comes in front of us. So we invite anybody and everybody to attend and become a member of the c- committee. Uh, once we form the committee, um, then we ask those committee members to bring their items, if you will, to the table. We also go back out and solicit, again, uh, all teachers, all staff, and all students. Uh, we've been doing it the last couple of years via a Google form, so that we can collect the data appropriately. And it's wide open. They can comment and ask us to review anything. Uh, that's contained within the pages of the handbook, or anything they think that we should be addressing that isn't contained there. So the committee takes that information and we vet it. Um, discussing it at length, uh, at times we'll go out, depending on what the item is, and, uh, seek some outside information. We didn't have to do much of that this year, but I can tell you in the past, when a couple of things have come up, we've gone and looked at other high schools' handbooks and all of that. We, we do whatever is required of us in terms of due diligence. As Marty said, this year, uh, things were pretty vanilla. Um, we started this process this year well before the school shutdown. Uh, but we actually wound up concluding it after school shutdown, uh, occurred. Uh, we were done by about the end of March. So once we are done and we, uh, produce our document, um, then we have to, and it's a, the committee understands that we are, uh, creating a proposal only, that, uh, it doesn't go further than that, there are recommendations. And then it goes through the vetting process, again, as I mentioned, with the principal, the school council, uh, through the superintendent, and obviously onto the school committee, who is the final arbiter of what this document, uh, looks like. So that's a quick overview of the process. Does that answer your question, Ryan? Okay, perfect. Uh, Ryan, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Dunkley about, uh, the proposed changes?
I, I think the one that, that Marty had singled out before, the, the unexcused absence is one, it would, it would just be helpful, Paul, to hear your, your, a little bit of discussion on, on that point, and, and why making that change now.
Ab- absolutely. So I'm, I'm gonna give you a little bit of history on this, uh, if I may. So, um, this has been in the handbook for, I would say, about a dozen years, gi- give or take. And, um, it was brought into the handbook at that time to help shore up, if you will, um, I don't want to say here, to help shore up, um, teachers and help them, uh, with attendance policies, and to, to help us have kids have good attendance in class. Um, I think we've certainly seen through the, the shutdown, uh, what happens when kids are not able to be face-to-face with a teacher. So, um, we've always felt really strongly that this was important. So it got worked in about twelve years ago, and basically the policy said this. Um, that if, uh, a student missed more than, you know, we, we say seven, they missed more than seven absences, well, that eighth absence constitutes twenty-five percent roughly of the number of times a s- our class meets over the course of a quarter. If a student misses more than that, um, each quarter, they could be subject to, um, failing for the quarter, getting a fifty-nine, uh, under two conditions. One, it has to be explicitly stated in the teacher's syllabus. And second, uh, if there's a student who might be in that situation, it has to be approved by administration. There have been, in my experience, very, very, very few instances where this was ever, uh, enacted. It certainly has appeared in some teachers' syllabi over the course of years, in terms of the number of teachers who have actually asked administration to act on this. Um, I can't give you an exact number, I can only tell you that it is extremely small. So we've been looking at this for the last couple of years, and s- and just basically saying, isn't there a better way to do this? Isn't there a better way to encourage students to be in class and to be, uh, more positive and proactive while still holding them accountable, without having this, you know, kind of, uh, kind of a sledgehammer approach to it, and those are my words, by the way, not anybody else's. Um, and so when we've talked about this, there was, there was absolute agreement on the committee that there are better ways to go about this, to help hold kids accountable in terms of attendance. And we've been talking to our teachers about this for a couple of years now, so they knew this was coming. Uh, that this was gonna be recommended more than likely by the committee. And, uh, so they've done some, some really good things in terms of, uh, enhancing what they do in terms of class participation and daily grades and all of that, and we're finding that it's working well. Um, to the best of my knowledge, certainly none came across my desk. I didn't get one request this year from a teacher, uh, to enact the fifty-nine. Um, so I think that speaks to the fact that there is a better way to, uh, to do this, and we've found that, and so this is really no longer necessary. I don't think it's best practice. I think the committee, uh, if you polled every member of our committee, I think they would agree with that. And so we're asking to have this removed. Like I said, I, there's a better way. It's better for kids going, going a different way, not this way. Kevin, does that help?
Yeah, I mean, just one quick follow-up, uh, based on what you just said, Paul, it sounds like this is not controversial at all from your perspective.
Um, there are, to be fair, in fact, we, Kevin, there are certainly, uh, some teachers who, who like to see that we have this. They feel that it gives them, um, I, I would say an added, added position of, uh, strength in terms of making sure the kids are attending school and attending cl- their class and all of that. But the reality is, when we look at the numbers in terms of number of class cuts, that type of thing, they're really low. We've got a really good system in place to manage that. So that certainly helps and supports the teachers, and we've got really good follow-up on absences. And, um, I just think it, uh, you know, I think that everybody will, will find that, uh, you know, for the, for the few that are left that are kind of on the dissenting side, I think they're gonna find that, uh, they're gonna be just fine. This does, in my opinion, I feel pretty strongly about this, and I think, I, again, I speak to the committee in this regard, since we voted unanimously on this entire package, that, uh, uh, we just don't believe this is best practice.
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Marty?
What I, what I liked about it, and why I was willing to advance it to the committee, was that it, it, it sort of, um, delinks a behavior with, uh, with an academic achievement, um, assessment. And so, you know, I think that's something that we want to continue to move in that direction, uh, across the board. And then, you know, I mean, if, I think, if, if you're instructing, there ought to be sort of a, a natural consequence of kids not showing up. They, the kids should see the value in showing up. They should want to be there for the learning, uh, as opposed to wanting to be there because there's this policy hanging over their head, so. I think it, as Paul has suggested, this is, um, this has been dying a slow death anyways for a little while at Long Meadow High School, so.
Gianna, did you have your hand up?
Thanks, Ryan. It, it, could I ask about the elevator language, or are we still on the?
Does anybody have anything else you want to ask about the, the absence from class? Suzie?
I don't want to ask anything, I just want to comment and say thank you. Thank you for, um, you know, taking a stand on that, because I think, um, the more we've done in education to tie time as equivalent to whether or not, you know, how a student should be graded, really doesn't, really gets away from the whole point of learning. And, um, I appreciate that, so, um, a- again, de- you know, taking it, taking the behavioral component out of it, but also taking the time is the most important piece versus learning being the most important piece, I think is, is critical. So, thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I agree with that, Suzie. Some kids need a hundred and eighty days, some need two hundred, some need four. So time and achievement are different. Uh, any other comments on attendance? And that's, um, Gianna, you want to talk about a different part?
Paul, thank you so much for, I know how much work. I, I remember some, you know, so just thank you. I know it's an incredible amount of work to go through all this. I was looking at the elevator language, the elevator use language.
Sure.
And it, so it says the elevator is available for use by students. Students who wish to use the elevator must request to use it by asking at the main office. Like, are they gonna need like a five oh four, or like a parent, like?
Nope, so a- 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 as, as you know, we have, um, you know, we occasionally have a student who is mobility impaired, and, you know, maybe in a wheelchair or whatever, that's kind of obvious, but with, you know, the thing that happens all the time is that, you know, uh, a kid will leave today and they'll show up tomorrow with crutches. And so we just want them to come to the office and say, hey, you know, I, I rolled an ankle, I twisted a knee, I, I tweaked a hip. Um, so that we know that they're on crutches, we're automatically gonna say to them, you can use the elevator, we want them to do that. We want to let them know that they can have a buddy that goes with them and can leave the classroom a couple of minutes early or a couple of minutes late, depending on what works, and carry their backpack. Uh, we also want to know who that child is, because in the event of an evacuation, in the event of a lockdown, um, one of the things that we do, because we have that on a list, is we automatically go and take a look and s- and find out who is where. And, and I'll give you a kind of a for- for example, if we have a fire drill, and, um, and when, uh, and if any of our, uh, mobility impaired kids are on the second floor, they're all brought to a specific room, it's room two thirteen. Um, and I'm actually, I, it just happens to be, I just have to be the person who scours, uh, the second floor, and I take a note of who's in two thirteen, and if we had an actual emergency, I would be alerting the fire department as to who is there, how many are there, and what we need in order to be able to evacuate them. Um, so it's really out of an abundance of caution and with, uh, a focus on safety, um, that we do this. We also want to be able to look and say, you know, we, we want to know who's riding the elevator. The other thing is, you know, if the elevator goes down for whatever reason, you know, they're mechanical, you know, machines, and, you know, once in a while they fail, uh, we need to know who's on crutches, so we need to know what class is to relocate. Um, because we, we will buy, um, um, it's just a standard operating procedure for us. If the elevator is out of order for whatever reason, we'll take any class that occurs on the second floor with a mobility impaired kit, and we will move it to the first floor to make sure that everybody has equal access.
Yeah.
To their class.
And so I guess I'm used to elementary elevator usage, so they don't need a, a staff escort to, to use the elevator.
They do not. You know, we are, I, I would lie to you if I said that our kids are better perfect all the time, that a hundred percent of the kids use it are mobility impaired, and nobody who shouldn't, doesn't. There's a transgression once in a great while. It's so rare and it's so minor. Um, there's no need to go beyond this. Um, there's no need to go beyond this. Um, we feel very comfortable with this. We've been doing this like this for a while. It's just that we're now documenting specifically what we've been doing.
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Any other questions or concerns for Mr. Dunkley? Any thoughts about the K to eight?
I just, uh, I'll just mention with the K handbook, your interest in the process. We have a, um, a district-wide handbook committee as well. Paul sits on it, um, to make sure that we're kind of moving in the same direction with the nine 12 handbook as the K eight handbook. So also on the K eight handbook team, uh, has been our assistant principals at the middle school, and Amy Stack, uh, represents the principals. So, uh, we'll go through any changes and make sure that it each year lines up with any policy changes that come out of the school committee. Uh, and I also ask, though it's not really required, I ask the principals to review changes with their K eight school councils as well. So we, we sort of take that extra step, in the same way that we do that with the high school handbook. Happy to answer any questions you might have about the changes in the K eight handbook.
Gianna?
Sorry, I'm looking through my, my document here. I can't remember if it was the, the high school or the K eight, so I apologize. Um, the added language about the inappropriate use of emails and social media.
Yeah.
And just want to make sure that it's, it's strong enough to address, you know, we've seen recently some, some stuff going on. Um, and I know that, you know, some is like, needs police involvement, some is school-related, but since I saw it in there.
Yeah, we wanted, we wanted to make sure that we folded in, um, uh, harassing language that might appear via text message or social media posts.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that because it's, it's, it's a concern.
Yeah.
Oh, Paul mentioned it, but I want to just check in again, and you guys have, uh, talked to the districts. So you compare what you do to other student handbooks? Is that correct?
In, in this sense, uh, not for any of the changes that are in front of you today, but as necessary, we would do that, you know, if we were looking at, uh, dress code or, or some other things. And then very often, we will have Ginny Tate, our school attorney, take a look at language. So we did a, we did a full-scale overhaul of that K eight handbook a couple of years ago. And, uh, our school attorneys were very involved in, in developing up-to-date language.
Any other questions or anything anyone wants to share? So can entertain a motion?
Uh, I move that the school committee approve the changes to the Long Meadow High School student handbook as presented.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This requires a roll call vote. Uh, Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And, uh, there could be a motion about the K to eight handbook if somebody would.
I move that the school committee approve the K to eight student handbook as presented.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunkley, for joining us.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank your committees for working so hard on this.
Thank you.
Make sure to pass that on. Thank you all very much. Have a pleasant evening and a great summer.
Thank you, Paul.
Bye now. So you may have noticed that, um, our student rep has left at the moment. He's going to come back. He has another meeting. Um, when he comes back, he would like to give his report then if we're still going. Um, but for administrative reports, first one up will be superintendent on the reopening advisory task force.
Sure. I thought it'd be most helpful for you to get an update, um, the work of the reopening advisory task force. Um, in fact, I'll, I'll share with you a document that was, um, shared with the re, re, uh, the reopening group. So what, what we've done process-wise is obviously assemble the team. Um, we think it's representative of, of the entire LPS community. The reopening, we have a dedicated email that we've received, um, probably a few dozen emails, uh, on, and those emails were shared with the reopening team. And what a small group from the team did, including Bronwyn, thank you, was to take those emails and kind of boil those down to common themes. And that was really helpful just to sort of distill it and figure out what's, what's on folks' minds. And then the other thing that's happening process-wise is Diane has been with us in the meetings. She's taking the meeting notes, and our intention has been to share those meeting notes back to the community. So I would also do the same thing with the sort of email summary, uh, that I just talked about, that I, you know, once, once I have that in a, a place where it's good to go, I'll feed that back to the community so that the community understands, um, what's on the minds of the entire community and, and also has some, some comfort and confidence that the advisory task force has, has heard the message and is kind of, uh, incorporating that into the, into the advisory work going forward. Um, the other thing that's happening is, uh, Sue Bertrand and, um, one other member of the committee are putting together, they've drafted a survey, uh, that will, uh, be sent out. My hope with that survey is that it's sort of forward-looking, that, um, it, it really is an opportunity for us to, uh, gather some feedback from staff and from the community about what will work when the new guidance comes out. Uh, more on the new guidance momentarily, but if I could, I'll share with you the, um, abbreviated summary of the email communication that the re, reopening advisory task force has received. So, uh, give me one second. I'll just quickly share the screen. So I'll try to hopefully, uh, be fair to the concerns that we heard. Um, many, many concerns about a, that the challenge that a potential hybrid schedule would present. Um, some considerable number of parents asking and staff asking that we be thoughtful. If, if we do have to group students, that we're thoughtful in that. A lot of concern expressed about how challenging this will be for working parents. Uh, I would say frankly that the emails were running, uh, much more in favor of a regular opening than some other type of opening. I think there, there's, you know, and, and we share that, obviously. There's clearly no substitute for in-person, you know, uh, live learning where kids are in front of their teachers with their, with their peers. Um, interest in sort of, uh, beefing up, uh, creating a more robust systems for online teaching and learning. Um, lots of expression about the value of synchronous real-time engagement. Um, a lot of expectations even around making sure that, that students are properly engaged, that there's, there's opportunities, uh, more opportunities for assessment and grading. Um, and a number of people expressing the, the difficulty teachers, for teachers in trying to teach remotely and in person. And again, we'll, we'll see how the guidance shakes out, uh, but that was, uh, expressed a few times as well. Uh, I'll try to go more quickly through the rest of this. Um, I mentioned the, the strong argument to reopen. We heard that, the, the strain that, um, this remote period has placed on families. Lots of concern about, uh, how well-prepared students will be coming out of this closure period. And expressions of concern about the challenge for our most vulnerable children. Uh, that would be students with disabilities, our youngest learners, uh, students with, um, with, uh, social, emotional, or behavioral concerns. Uh, when we did hear arguments not to reopen, it really was, um, you know, not to reopen under, um, social distancing arrangements or, and even concerns about, uh, masks and, and what a, um, what a remote schedule or a hybrid schedule or a socially-distanced arrangements, the effect that that would have on students' well-being overall, and how that is a poor substitute for, uh, real in-person learning. So, um, we did hear some concerns about the, the makeup of the task force. You know, my assurance that I would give to anyone concerned about this is that, um, we're committed to that two-way exchange of information. I want the community to understand the discussions of the, of the committee, uh, and I want us to continue to gather feedback from the community. Few other things, um, obviously concerns relating to safety measures, um, and what happens when we have symptomatic children, um, or staff. Uh, and then also kind of some expectations and hopes that we are meeting students where they are as learners when they return. Considerable discussion and emails that we received about the, uh, the social, emotional well-being of children. And that the first few days, in particular, not exclusively, but the first few days will be especially important for us to, to support students' needs and concerns about long-term mental health impacts that this pandemic will have on children. Um, students with disabilities, I, I will mention that, um, Jean Fontaine, our people services director, that she reported to the advisory group, uh, at its last meeting. So I think the team came up with a, a really good understanding of just how challenging remote learning is for students with disabilities, and how challenging it is for our staff to support students in those, in those situations. Uh, expressions of concern about the, the PD, uh, professional development for teachers, and then making sure that we had very clear, insistent, equitable expectations for staff. And then a myriad of miscellaneous concerns relating to surveys and how's the busing going to work, access to materials, uh, and, um, families expressing the hope that they will have some voice in, uh, when their children go to school and under what conditions and what schedule. So that's a, that's a, appreciate the group that worked on the emails. That was, um, again, our effort to take a lot of email information and kind of boil it down into something manageable and identify common themes, common concerns. Um, I was appreciative that we asked Senator Lesser's office and Rep Ash's office to, uh, send a representative to the meeting, and they, they were gracious enough to do that. So Joel McCalliffe and Robin Frichette, uh, came to our meeting, and I was really happy to give that advisory task force the opportunity to talk to, essentially talk to our representatives. But more importantly, I think it gave the representative, our legislators' representatives a chance to hear the challenges that we are no doubt going to face. That they came away, I think, with a clear understanding of the challenge that is in front of us as we look to reopen schools. A quick final note, and then I'll stop and we can talk if we have questions. Um, the guidance from the state has not come out. I'm hearing that it will be out, uh, tomorrow midday. We do have a statewide call with the commissioner at 9:30 for superintendents. So I suspect we'll know more tomorrow about what that reopening will look like and what guidelines we will need to work inside of. So that's a sort of a status report on reopening and a status report on the work of that reopening advisory task force. So if you have any thoughts or questions, I'm, I'm happy to take a shot at it. I'll give you a minute to go ahead.
Gianna?
So Superintendent, thank you for that overview. I know I wasn't on the group that, and thank you to the group that did go through all that feedback. I, I know I wasn't on that group, but I was able to go through all of the feedback. And I just want to say to all of the parents and guardians and family members and community people who did, um, submit feedback, that it was just, it was thoughtful and there were suggestions and there was resolutions and alternatives and, and, um, I'm just very grateful for all of the time and input that people put into those, um, those emails and, and ideas. And I would just encourage people to continue to communicate, as you suggested, um, for that ongoing back and forth. I think it was just really, really valuable what people submitted.
I don't have, thank you, Gianna. I don't have everybody on my screen, so if somebody else wants to ask a question or make a statement, start talking. Bronwyn?
Uh.
Great. It takes me a while to get there.
I just wanted to add, uh, to what Gianna said, um, it's definitely a great group, and, um, I've heard a lot of good feedback in terms of, um, the email that people are able to use as a vehicle to get their message to everyone. So the entire advisory task force is able to see the emails. Um, and then there was a, a great group of people that were able to really dig in and come up with a lot of this information from the last meeting. Um, so I just thought it was important that everyone knows that the emails are being read and considered and, um, please continue sending any ideas you have. Uh, it's very helpful and we appreciate everyone's time doing so. Um, and I appreciate, um, Kristin Newmark and Marty Joseph and Diane Porfilio working so diligently on, um, going through all the emails and collecting so much information for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Anybody else? Jamie?
Quick one. Yeah, it's, it's more for, uh, Marty. Um, so we're, we're going to get guidance tomorrow. Do you expect it to be a moving target throughout the summer where things are changing? Or is tomorrow kind of like your baseline where, you know, this is probably what we're going to be looking at with puts and minuses? If they give you any indication of just be ready for changes every, every other week as things change?
Well, I, I think, so it seems that most of the guidance that comes out, there's a qualifier attached to the guidance. It'll say something like at this time, or, you know, uh, this is a dynamic situation, that kind of thing. And I understand that. I mean, that, that, that makes sense. Um, they did suggest that, you know, there's a continuum here that we may be moving back and forth on, that, you know, we could be that we are able to go towards less restrictive models. But if we see a spike, that we might need to go to a more restrictive model. And the commissioner has said to sort of be prepared for that. Couple of encouraging things, um, and, you know, that I did hear is that one of like, some of the mitigation, the safety mitigation strategies that have been put forward in the last few weeks have sort of been like one size fits all. Everybody's wearing a mask all the time. And I, I've heard that some of those mitigation strategies will be a little bit more nuanced and that there'll, there'll be some common sense applied, uh, so that, I think it will, Jamie. I think it will be a, uh, a somewhat fluid situation. And, you know, that, that can be really disconcerting and challenging, but also it, it means that, you know, perhaps we can move to something less restrictive. But, you know, it's no doubt parents want their children back in school. That's what I'm hearing, and that's what we want. Uh, you know, obviously you have to do that in a way that's, that's safe, and we, we have to be prepared. I want to be really clear on this, that we're going to have to be prepared to support staff and families who are not prepared to come back for whatever reason. Um, so that's a, that, that alone is going to make it a very dynamic situation, even if the state guidance doesn't change. We'll have to be responsive to staff. the state guidance doesn't change. We'll have to be responsive to staff and families here.
Anybody else with a Kevin?
Just a quick follow-up on that, Marty. I really appreciate that you you brought up the staff because I think that's a super important point uh to make sure that the the staff are safe. As we've seen, you know, it seems like kids aren't as uh prone to getting this as as adults are. And so making sure the staff is safe has to be one of our top priorities. So thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else?
Next meeting of the task force is July first. Three o'clock, uh that's a Wednesday, Wednesday, three o'clock, July first.
Okay, Bronwyn.
I just wanted to uh add one thing. I'm not sure Marty might have already mentioned it, but um super helpful to the public I've heard is the um posting of minutes from the meeting. Uh I think that's a great way of communicating and um it's also spurred on some emails with questions or ideas um from parents uh after they read the minutes. So if people could continue to go on there and read the minutes, that would be uh super helpful.
Checking my screen to see if anybody else has their hand up. With Marty's document on there, I can't see everybody, so I gotta click. No, it's okay. That's what we're talking about, so why it's on there. Uh I think I'd just like to echo uh Jamie's question and comment about the fluidity of the situation. And probably our best bet is to keep our representatives informed of the position of the long metal public. Because in the end, the governor and the commissioner are the ones who are gonna make a lot of the decisions for us. So we need them to know how we feel. So I think Bronwyn, what you pointed out about people letting their opinion known is probably the best method for everybody. So thank you for having a good method for that. Last call. Anybody else question or comment on reopening task force? All right, seeing none. And now seeing everybody, that's easier. Um I don't have a chair report. Uh I I do. I take that back. I'm gonna try to do a great job for all of you. I appreciate the honor of being the chair. And um as long as you all keep working hard, everything will be perfect. So thank you. As I mentioned, when we got to the admin admin reports section, Armin had to step away at a competing meeting, but he trusts us to take a long time and he believes he will be back in time to give his report then. So we can go to other reports. Bronwyn, do you have an LPVAC report?
Uh we met last night and confirmed the contract with the new executive director, Roland Joyle, who begins on July first. Um and we will be having our next meeting mid-August, maybe eighteenth or nineteenth, off the double check. Thanks.
Had the pleasure of discussing education with Roland before, so that's a great choice. Good work by you, Bronwyn.
Yeah, everyone's really excited.
Energy and sustainability? No report. Open space.
I'll have an update uh next meeting.
Great, thank you. Finance sub has no report, according to our sheet. Policy knows no report and curriculum no report. Is that correct? So eval sub did meet on June eleventh. Just briefly let you know what that was about. It was basically to talk about the recent evaluation. Uh answer Marty's questions and give direction uh based on what everybody's feedback was. And it was a good meeting and I think we look forward to the new plan and the goal for this year. Marty, anything else you want to add about that?
I don't know. I appreciate the uh the opportunity to have that conversation and be assured that the recommendations that came out of the evaluation will be reflected in the uh the annual plan that I put together uh for your review. It'll probably be August, uh mid to end August that 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 plan is good to go.
Ongoing business, number twelve, textbook adoption. The school committee was presented with a link to the new social studies textbook for middle school students. And the textbook was first presented during the meeting of June second. Um we have Sue here. There's a, should we talk first or do we go with the recommended motion first and then talk? We have a motion if anybody wants to make one and then we have discussion.
I moved up the school committee adopt the following new textbook, World Geography and Ancient Civilizations, one and two. I'm a Bra Hill Education twenty twenty for grades six and seven.
There's a motion. Is there a second on this?
Second.
Discussion. Can I start, Tom? There's two recommended motions under this. Can you explain the difference for everybody, please?
Yes, the first motion is for the uh school committee to actually adopt the use of the books. Um they are new, so it is a process that the school committee has to adopt them. The second motion would provide funding or the approval to use funds within the FY twenty budget to make the purchase.
Great. So we have to adopt first before we can choose to buy them. Any discussion uh on the textbooks? Suzie. You?
Well, I appreciate the fact that there was a process um to a a pretty, it sounded like a thorough process at our last meeting to uh vet these particular textbooks. I'm still um I'm still concerned that there's no fully written curriculum to guide the um the courses themselves versus the and and I'm worried that the textbooks will will take that um role unfortunately, which in best practice really um isn't the case. And so I I just, I I I felt I needed to mention that. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with approving um the adoption of a textbook when there's not a written curriculum for it.
Thank you. Marty, you had your hand up uh for a second there. Do you want to talk?
No, I was just gonna mention, I I, you know, I know um the committee had given us some feedback on the adoption and and I think um what I want you to know is it it seemed pretty clear that there was some interest in exploring uh open source options. So uh that's something that when the time is right, whether it's this summer or at some point in the fall, we we'd love the opportunity to sort of um continue that discussion with you. And I think also the uh the the process um the the concerns and questions you have regarding process is something that will will also be reflected in in how we approach it going forward. Even, you know, one of the things that I think we'll need some feedback even from finance sub on is is the the budgeting and um there have been, you know, whether or not it it makes sense to approach this with end-of-year funds as we have or whether the committee would rather see a um specific line item in in the budget. So we can, we can take that up with finance sub as well. Uh in terms of the curriculum, I think uh we we do need to flesh that out more. I'd say the the scope and sequence is is set and the obviously the the standards have been unpacked by the team. Uh but there is still some work to do and I I think that might be some part of our summer work uh this summer anyways.
Bronwyn.
Uh I don't know if this is for Sue or Marty. I was just wondering um if the social studies teachers are gonna have an opportunity to complete the curriculum this summer? Okay, great.
We do put out a an all-call to staff for um for curriculum projects, for curriculum writing projects, and so that those requests, those proposals have come in.
So is that, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
All right, Suzie.
Is that voluntary or will this because we're in a position where we don't have a curriculum? And and I haven't necessarily seen unpacking of standards. The documents that were shared were literally just topics and you know, act some activities um identified. Um I didn't see an unpacking of standards in the documents that were sent. So um I think there, just based on what I've seen, I I think there's a lot more work to be done. That's a lot for a summer. And if and if you're relying on volunteers, if you you know, and and you don't get anyone to volunteer from the sixth or seventh grade, um that's that's just concerning to me.
It's a stipend in uh possibility for the summer, either salary advancement credit or uh a stipend or pay for it.
I can't hear you very well, Sue, sorry.
Neither did I.
So the summer curriculum work is is paid, is that better? It's a paid position. It's either a stipend position or salary advancement credit.
But do the, but it's it sounds like the people have to be willing and and volunteer to be part of that. And yes, they will get paid for it, but they have to volunteer their time in terms of I'll be available to do it, right?
Yeah, are willing and looking forward to it.
The uh the social study, our our um curriculum coordinators at the middle level also have some summertime too. They have some summer days, is that?
Uh they have a couple.
Yeah, and we can apply that to this work as well.
Our curriculum coordinator at the middle school was actually on the framework committee, so with the on-plate probably two years ago now. So that work happened quite a long time ago and then the textbook ended up with the framework and we put it on hold a little bit, but um definitely didn't articulate their work. And the head there had some trouble pulling out. But if I was led you to believe that the book is especially with the textbook and make that their curriculum and have to kind of go through it from front to back, uh that is not at all uh their intention, nor mine. I would be very disappointed if that that became a thing, but um this text in particular, I was happy to see it had a lot of primary source places that you could go and and you can get kind of other open source things within the the clicking on the links on the digital text. So I felt better about that. And um they did look at about five or six open source textbooks. But do plan on using tons of other curriculum.
Uh Nicole, you have a question?
I I had a question about the purchase of the physical copies of the books. Um I know it mentioned that we're also gonna be doing online subscriptions and that will be for every student. But the physical copies of the books, are we purchasing enough for every sixth and seventh grader or classroom sets?
Classroom sets, Nicole.
Perfect.
Which probably may may not get touched by. We talked last a couple weeks ago about how it's about dollar more, you know, to get the classroom to hardcover a lot of the digital stuff.
Okay, so there'll be another resource used by the teacher, not necessarily the resource that's guiding through the curriculum? Okay.
Well, we want to be mindful of that with uh for the nineteen as well, so there always been swirling around about probably books, even though they're great for some.
Thank you.
I think Gianna, you also had your hand up?
I'll defer to to Suzie because she, you know, shifting our lens of what good instruction and good learning is. Um I'm wondering, um you know, how well we'll be able to develop some really robust assessments um in the curriculum over the summer, knowing that social studies is just and geography, both of them in particular lend themselves to really um opening up different ways of assessing students versus just, you know, picking items from a test builder and and setting up tests. So that's something I I think that, you know, again, kind of caused me some caution and concern in um, you know, relying on this textbook really to drive um the the pedagogy. Um and then the second thing was, while while in the long term and under normal circumstances, the purchase of classroom sets is a is a smart choice, um physically responsible choice. Um in COVID nineteen, when, you know, kids are actually sharing these books, um you know, we we don't want them to share things. So um that's another uh question that came up for me.
So we're gonna, they'll have to either put the books away and assign books to students who require them for different needs, right? Hardcover books. Most students have to carry them with them at all times, go to their home or something like that. But I think that it's not such a concern for our social studies books, our history. Uh I mean, we have, you know, classroom libraries are great in elementary school and kids are there all the time picking off the shelves for their just like books and so, yeah, that reopening task force. Did you get off it, Suzie? Are you still on it? So I mean, that's a huge, a huge thing. How do we clean all of our materials that especially if kids are sharing like that? If you turn over all, but also when we were buying, we were like, oh, great time to be buying this. We have to be sharing for people. There are, there are always a handful of students who better get them having.
Uh I saw Bronwyn's hand up and then Marty, Bronwyn, go ahead. There you go.
I was just wondering if, just in the event that um students do happen to share, and and this isn't just for this uh social studies, I guess just in general. If um if Marty, you could look at something like a a protocol that can be followed. I'm I'm not sure exactly what the steps would be, but just to ensure that things are um you know, I guess disinfected somehow, that so they're not being passed from person to person um until this this is passed. I'm not sure how we'd go about doing that. And I I don't think that this um the social studies books are the only ones that will be um affected. But it's just a concern in terms of when books are shared. Um can we put a protocol in place for that?
Uh if I can interject for a second, um I completely agree that this is really important, but it's slightly off topic on whether or not we should have this textbook. I think we're all very, no, I I completely agree with you. As a principal, what we're doing with materials is going to be hugely important. I think just at the moment, let's stay focused on whether or not we want to adopt this. Nicole, you had your hand up?
I'm all set.
Marty was next, I think.
I'm good. I'm good. Thanks, man.
Gianna?
Is there, is there any way to revisit this adoption motion at the next meeting and in between? Sue and her team can create a curriculum development plan that can be presented to us so that we know what the targets are gonna be over the summer for cre for developing the curriculum?
If I could add to that, maybe curriculum sub, do you have a meeting planned anytime soon, if that is something that's appealing to anyone? Suzie?
We are actually coming up to the point where we need to have a meeting and it was a, it was sort of, I I don't want to create meetings just to have meetings, but um it was about the remote, specifically remote learning curriculum um areas that we were need, we needed to follow up, but that's certainly something we could address at a curriculum meeting, yes.
Jamie?
Yeah, if um I I would want to have Tom jump in on this, but I think these are very timely purchases. Um I know we're talking about the the first part of this, but the second part um is very time sensitive um with regards to year end.
Good point. Tom, you want to?
I think we're in the last few few weeks of this, but you, I'll let you speak up.
Yeah, no, thank you, Jamie. You are right. The proposal would be to use funds in the FY twenty budget, which ends on June thirtieth. Um even with your approval tonight, we still have to get a contract signed by the vendor and then by the town before the purchase can go through. So there is some lead time even getting uh that done before the end of the fiscal year. So unfortunately, uh I mean, you most certainly can delay it, but we wouldn't be able to use FY twenty funds. We would have to find money within the FY twenty-one budget for the purchase.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Jamie, for that question. So good suggestion, Gianna, but it looks like up against the time that might not uh work out at the moment. Anybody else with a question or a concern you want to share? We have, oh yeah, go ahead, Gianna.
So then can we? So then can we maybe amend the motion to include? If we had, if we adopt the books, there has to be a curriculum development plan created within the next couple of weeks. And then curriculum sub can meet and maybe Sue and her team can present to curriculum sub.
Um, I don't know the answer to whether or not that kind of thing can be put into a motion.
Can I ask?
Go ahead, Nicole.
Can I ask where, where are you at this point with developing the curriculum? Are there people who have already volunteered to be working over the summer? Where are we currently?
Yeah, we have some volunteers to accomplish summer currently. The everything and the challenging thing is that they're just teaching.
I'm sorry.
You're freaking out.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time.
I think I caught that. You said there's two teachers?
The teachers in sixth and two and seven, only two in sixth and two in seven. So that it was not a lot of, kind of wrangling a lot of people. Um, and so we have willing participants in both schools to do that. Um, you know, I think, although I appreciate, um, you know, wanting to see the curriculum development plan, um, I, I think looking at it as a whole as, as a district of how we develop curriculum, how we purchase text, how we purchase materials. As a, as a good thing, a good discussion, our, our curriculum stuff, because, um, you know, don't have a placeholder in the budget for purchases like this. We are depending on end of year funds for these kinds of things, and then they kind of pop back as we know how much money we have left over. It's been a challenge for, for a while and we've been trying to figure out a way to come up with some number for a placeholder. I'd rather have a demo discussion about curriculum and curriculum planning and how we provide staff time for that, do it adequately. And it's kind of say you have to for this subject. They, they have to. There's no way they can't, right? And they want to, and they're looking forward to it.
If I'm hearing multiple voices correctly, um, please jump in and tell me if I'm wrong, that it appears that, um, we would like to know what the plan will be at some point soon, so that we know that there's a concrete plan on building this curriculum and other curricula in the future. Um, my suggestion also, I know there's only two six and two sevens, but it's probably a good idea to do vertical planning and maybe somebody from the high school is willing to come and work with the sixes and sevens. So that we have a K to twelve type plan, so everyone knows what everybody else is doing. Uh, separate from whether or not we would adopt this particular textbook. Um, am I right then? The feeling is there might be a reason to have this textbook, but we really want, um, attention paid to the curriculum building process.
I think that's accurate.
The new standards for social studies are set to begin no later than this fall, am I correct?
The standards have been rolling out for a couple of years now. So, yeah, there was some change that, that made us reconnoitre kind of where we, we teach things. So, yeah, like we, we put in civics last year at, uh, middle schools.
And the expectation is to begin those changes for sixth and seven, starting this fall.
Starting this fall.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a similar sequence, but they push some of the things into six and, you know, some of the things down. So, up to the high school and.
Any other questions or comments on the motion?
I just would love to hear Suzie follow up on, on if she's comfortable with what we've just been discussing.
Um, thank you, Kevin. Um, though, y- you know, I, I still have a discomfort because in my experience with writing curriculum, you write the curriculum first and then you align your resources with it. And so, um, given that we don't have a written curriculum, I'm still concerned that, um, I, I'm concerned that a summer is a, is a very short period of time for, you know, a very small group of people to write a well-developed curriculum as well. Um, and I, I also, you know, I do, I, I have concern from the, from the fiduciary side that we don't set aside funds in our budget for textbooks so that we, the school committee are put in this position of having to approve textbooks at the end of the year and then our, you know, a- and we're not in a really good position to do that. Um, because there's no line item in the budget set aside for this. Um, and again, from a, from my own experience as a superintendent, working with a, with a budget, um, that was just something that we always, you know, had a line on for. Might not have been exactly what we needed. Um, we might have put a placeholder in there, but certainly, um, knowing that an adoption was coming. But there was a, a pretty, you know, well-defined process and I, I just, I feel like we're missing that here. Um, and I feel like we're in a position to make a snap decision on something when the whole idea isn't fully baked. And, you know, and I, I don't mean, you know, I mean, no disrespect to the team. I think it's just we're put in a, a difficult position to make a decision very quickly, um, on something that's pretty important. Um, and we wanna make sure the teachers have the resources that they need um, to, to guide them to implement instructional best practice and curriculum best practice. And I just don't think we're at that point here. I, a textbook is great, but it cannot take the place of really strong instruction. It is, you know, it's a resource. It's not the, it, it's not the teaching. It's not the pedagogy.
I saw Marty, then Bronwyn.
I, hey, I, I'd be all in favor of having a, a dedicated, uh, line in the budget. I've, it's something I've talked about for a long time and, and, and having that in place ahead of time makes a lot of sense to me. I think we ought to have that incorporated into into the annual budget. You know, realistically, if you think about it, um, I, I, I just wanna be careful about painting this with, with really broad brushes that there's no curriculum and that there's no, that we're only relying on, uh, textbook-generated materials. I mean, we have a lot of creative teachers who use the text as an anchor. Um, that's why we're looking at classroom sets, because they do draw on many, many outside sources. I, I'm, I understand the, um, that we need to look at overall process here. That makes a lot of sense to me. And I, I would welcome that, that opportunity to, um, frankly, increase the budget to have that in there. But the, 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 the flip side of that is if we, to think about the timing of that, you would have to, the, the, the social studies framework, I think, came out as like the fall of eighteen, which means you need to, we would have had to develop a budget in January of nineteen to allow for the study and the nineteen twenties school year to allow for the purchase in the twenty one school year. So I would welcome that. I, I, I just wanna, you know, understand that if we, if we had those placeholders in the budget, you can have the same conversation at the very beginning of the budget process and we could come to you with a budget and say, well, we, we'd like to, we have a placeholder for forty thousand dollars for a textbook adoption. And then the question's gonna be, well, what book? Where's the curriculum? What, you know, so we need to have some tolerance for that, that if we do it early on, which I would welcome, I think it's an excellent idea. Have some tolerance for the fact that if you, if you're budgeting in January of nineteen, you need the nineteen twenties school year to study and pilot and figure out what your options are. So it's, it's, um, I would rather have the conversation earlier than later. I think that makes a ton of sense. It's something that's, that I, I'm hopeful for. I'd love to have that conversation with finance sub and, and, and fold that into the budget, but I just wanna be careful about how we characterize how the textbook is going to be used, because I, I, you know, I would agree. It would be very disappointing to me if, if we had, if we were just kind of marching through a textbook without any attention to the standards or without any attention to, uh, authentic assessment. So uh, that's a conversation that I think we, we owe you more information on that. And I, and I think doing that in curriculum sub makes a ton of sense. I, I think you're asking great questions and I, I welcome the chance to maybe slow down the conversation. Perhaps we bring in the principals, perhaps we bring in our social studies coordinator and get you the answers, because I, I think we're, you know, there are, there are other answers out there that I think we owe you and I wanna get those to you, so.
Bronwyn, you were next.
I was just gonna say, uh, what Marty mentioned and a couple other people about, um, a line item for textbooks. I mean, it does sound like it could be tricky, um, but definitely something to look into because one worry is, you know, what if for some reason we didn't have any end of the year funds to purchase these textbooks? What would be sixth and seventh graders be doing in the fall? I mean, we're very fortunate that we do, but, um, you know, in the back of my mind, I, I think, oh my gosh, what if, what if we didn't? What if we weren't in this position?
Suzie?
Yeah, and, um, you know, I, I didn't, i- if, if I came off as saying that the, my, my comments are not about the, the teachers and, and their ability at all, uh, in doing what they need to do. The standards are aligned with the textbook. That's, that's why, I, I think that's one of the reasons that you chose the textbook. There's, there's clearly some pieces there, um, and, and that was not it. It, it really is the process of not having a written curriculum before you choose the resource. And that's, that's my biggest sticking point. Um, and so, uh, that's, that's where I continue to stand in this. But yes, I'm, I'm one hundred percent committed to, you know, engaging with, you know, through the curriculum subcommittee, engaging with Sue and Marty and talking about how we can forge a better, um, you know, system and process going forward for sure. So thank you.
And we previously made the point that we would love for there to be a formal review of maybe more open source too. And so you recognized in the last meeting, I recall.
Yeah, I, I totally get that. Yep, and I totally agree with what everyone said too about the process.
So, uh, are there any other comments? Despite our interest in having a new process, we have the current process and that's called a recommended motion that has already been seconded. So we are going to have a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Epstein.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. So that adopted the textbook. There's also another motion, possible motion in your packet. I move that the school committee approved the use of end of year funds to purchase the newly adopted World Geography and Ancient Civilizations one and two. We're using grades six and seven in the amount of forty one thousand, two hundred fifty one dollars and sixty eight cents. So motion is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Epstein.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. You can see we, our student rep is back, so when we get to the possibility of him talking, we will, it'll be in a couple minutes. Armin, welcome back. Uh, the next item on ongoing business is compensation and benefits authorization. The school committee will discuss the continued compensation and benefits for staff. Tom, is this for you to remind us or Marty to remind us what this is about?
Yeah, so, uh, this motion would allow us to continue paying, uh, staff their bi-weekly amounts. Um, our school year staff received their last paycheck on Wednesday, yesterday. Um, but there are some year-round positions that are still working, uh, remotely. And this would basically allow and authorize compensation at their regular rate that they would see, receive, uh, every two weeks.
And we've done this a few times.
Uh, we've been doing this since, uh, the end of March.
Possible motion, if anybody'd be interested. I'm sorry, go ahead, Diane.
Hi, Tom, can you just look at what, uh, the recommended motion is to see if it needs to be changed since school year staff is no longer?
Yeah, no, I think it's good, Diane, because it does address in the portion of their annual, uh, base pay and stipend. So they've received their full base pay. The annual, the, the annual, uh, s- school year staff, so we're, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the school committee authorize that for the pay period ending Friday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty. The district pay all current employees not on leave, that portion of their base pay and the portion of any annual stipend to which they are entitled, consistent with the effective collective bargaining agreement or individual contract of employment or in the case of unrepresented at-will employees who have not been furloughed, the same amount as paid for the week ending June fifth, twenty twenty. Motion is there a second?
Second.
And second at any discussion? Do you call for a vote, Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn? You're muted. Do you want a thumbs up or unmute?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. New business. We have, um, end of year transfer authority. Tom, is this something for you to talk about?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, so each year around this time in June, the, uh, school committee would authorize the superintendent to approve budget transfers that are needed to, um, comply with a policy DBJA, which, uh, outlines basically when a transfer has to be done uh, to close out the fiscal year by line item. And so instead of, because of the timeliness of when those transfers need to be entered, in order to close the fiscal year, uh, doesn't always line up with the summer school committee meeting schedule. So this just basically allows us to, uh, get the, to comply with the timeline to get the transfers processed. It is, uh, it's something that is done, uh, every year.
Anybody have any questions for Tom? Or would like to read a recommended motion?
I will. I move as specified in the school committee policy DBGA, that the school committee grant authority to the superintendent to approve the necessary budget transfers between munis budgetary lines in order to close the FY twenty twenty accounts.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Second at any discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Tom, end of year funds?
Um, I don't know, Marty, you wanna start?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get us going on this. Um, so we, uh, we're obviously in that place where we want to make sure that we have the supplies, equipment and materials that we need to, to open safely. There's a number, obviously a number of unanswered questions, but one of the things that's becoming clear to us is what we need in terms of supplies and equipment. Um, I wanna share with you, if I could, just a, um, a little summary document that uh, is, shows you some of the items that we, uh, proj- are projecting that we will need. Um, and how we propose going about obtaining those items. Uh, obviously, this is a rapidly developing picture, but I think this will give you some idea of our preparations and what's involved with trying to identify and procure the, uh, what we need. So you'll see two columns here with some recommendation for how we might um, secure the items that are on the left. Well, I was pleased that Senator Lesser's office and Rep Ash's office had an opportunity to um, kind of have some sense of this as well at, at our advisory task force meeting that they, I think they came away with an understanding of just, you know, the expenses involved with uh, securing the PPE and safety supplies that we need for that we need. So, um, the CARES grant is something that we've talked to you about. Uh, we are in the middle of putting together the application for, uh, school targeted CARES funding. We have two hundred and forty two thousand dollars is our projected allocation. Some of that needs to go to our, our private school partners in the area. Uh, but we have, um, a, an amount that we can direct towards some of the. Uh, but we have um, a, an amount that we can direct towards some of the PPE and sort some of the supplies. Where we need some uh, feedback and some um, direction from the committee is whether or not we ought to try to um, secure some of these items with FY twenty end of year funds. And you know, this is, we're in a situation where when things become available, we have to move somewhat efficiently and quickly. But we wanted to, you know, propose to the committee that um, you provide us some level of authorization. Uh, use FY twenty funds, end of year funds for the purchase of some of the items that are on the, the list that I'm projecting. So Tom, I, I, I'm hoping I uh, did that justice. Maybe there's, there's more you'd wanna add there.
Yeah, uh, thanks Marty. Uh, the only piece I think I would add is that uh, we have already moved on uh, procuring some of the items that are listed in that FY uh, twenty school department budget column. Uh, specifically, we, we felt it uh, important to move on the sanitizer. Uh, I think we moved about a week, a month or six weeks ago in order to get an order placed to ensure that we would have the dispensers and sanitizer uh, available and in place for the start of the school year. Uh, the electrostatic disinfectant sprayers, we also uh, purchased those again about a month ago. Uh, we received half of the shipment so far. So we ordered twelve, we have six of them in. The thermometers uh, we just received. So the two items that um, are still outstanding would be the, the PPE line, uh, the twenty-seven-five-hundred. And what that represents, at least at this point, is um, in terms of complying with the guidance that this, that Desi gave us for masks, it would allow us to purchase about fifty thousand masks to have available for us. Um, you know, once school opens, uh, the state is, is trying to be a resource to districts uh, to ensure that there are enough uh, companies out there that can support the demand that uh, the districts will have. Um, my feeling though would be I, I don't wanna wait until July one because I'm afraid everybody will be starting to put orders in with their, either their new budget and or uh, through the CARES grant. Um, so uh, that would be one component that um, we're asking for authorization to use FY twenty funds for. The other piece would be student desks. Uh, Center School, it um, has tables or stu- two, two-person or student desks that they use throughout um, K five. And if social distancing is a requirement, uh, it, it will be really difficult to accommodate students um, in a manner where they are separated. Uh, even if only half of the students are coming, some of the desks at the uh, very early grades, K uh, and one, we wouldn't have enough tables in order to separate them and, and, and um, accommodate the number of students that could be in a class. So um, we certainly are getting a couple of pre- different prices. The thought would be that um, if we're going to invest in new desks, it would probably become permanent replacement, not just something that we're gonna use and then uh, put into storage or, or not continue using somewhere in the district if Center doesn't wanna keep them, but it could be used uh, in some of the more uh, in the schools that have the most uh, dire need for furniture replacement. Um, but that number, I think is probably, it's based on a purchase of about four hundred and thirty desks. Um, anywhere, I think I used a hundred and fifty-five dollars or so uh, as a ballpark in terms of the price. The concern with that is the lead time we're hearing. It could be anywhere from four to eight weeks depending upon the manufacturer in order to get the desks in. And again, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that if we wait until uh, even another week and a half to be able to get them in and set up for the first day of school. So um, i- i- I guess on the CARES grant figures, it's, they're preliminary. Uh, the, you know, I would say they're kind of our best guess at this point where we would allocate the funds. I think once we have uh, the guidance from Desi, it might change our thinking a little bit. But um, as of right now, that's kind of the breakdown of where we would uh, budget the funds for utilization.
Thank you. Anybody with a question? I'm clicking the screen. Sorry, yeah, I'm clicking through, so I'm trying to find you. Go ahead Gianna.
Thanks for all this, Tom. Um, the, the PPE estimated budget seems very low to me. Um, and the fifty thousand masks. I thought it was one mask per student per week.
Yeah, that, that, that's correct for a twelve-week period. So uh, depending upon what the guidelines say, Gianna, as to whether or not all the students are in school or half. Um, in terms of the guidelines, when they release them in regards to the safety equipment, they recommended using half the enrollment um, each week. So that equated to about eighteen thousand masks um, based on one mask per student per week. So that would be about fifteen hundred masks um, for twelve weeks, which would be about eighteen thousand masks. The other component is for staff, which is um, the guidance said to plan for one, five per staff person per week. Um, you know, I, I think I rounded up a little bit. So that was about five hundred employees with five masks for twelve weeks, brought, came to thirty thousand. So that's forty-eight thousand. Again, I just rounded it up to fifty thousand. I'm sure, you know, we might not need as many. Hopefully, students and staff might want their own. But um, I think to be positioned to ensure that we have the necessary numbers, at least to get us started, uh, is where I came up with that. The money that is in the CARES grant for PPE would allot for an additional purchase of another uh, forty or fifty thousand masks.
So that's just masks then? What about like gloves and face shields and what about the other?
Yeah.
Pieces of that.
The volume of gloves and face shields would be much lower based on the number of staff that they're recommending. So nurses, custodians, and uh, staff that are in that um, that fall into that high intensity contact. So the volume, the number that would fall into that category would be much lower than the number that we're buying for in terms of the disposable masks. The shields would be reusable. Um, and so, yeah, we, and, and we also have purchased some gloves, although they're difficult to come by right now.
Okay, and then Tom, and thank you for that. What about the after-school student support? What, what, do we already do? What is that?
Yeah, I think the, the thought process there was, Gianna, that there may be um, some expansion to support students who uh, we see might need some, some additional help in terms of where they fall in terms of uh, their learning over the last three months and kind of bringing them back up to uh, to a level that um, you know, gets them back on par. Um, probably a little bit more than what we were doing prior to the, to the closing back in March. Um, and so that plans for uh, some expansion of, of that service.
Okay, so that's academic. That's not like if a kid is not picked up.
Or, yeah, correct, that's academic.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a cool question. It's sort of a comment, Marty, where, Tom, um, somebody thought a third grader is gonna use one mask for an entire week or? That's disgusting.
I, I could take a stab at it that um, I think the, the plan, the goal is that students are bringing their own. Uh, and that the district would have one available for either when they forget it or they need to use something for what, a, a, another one for whatever reason. Um, that is the number. Um, again, I don't, you know, it's a ball cart. I most certainly think that we would monitor our inventory and give us plenty of lead time to replace uh, or add to what we have available if we're starting to see a higher utilization than what we planned for. But that, that's what the guidance calls for is one per student per week.
Marty?
I think uh, the, the guidance on masks could shift a little bit. I, I think when the initial guidance came out, the one mask per student per week, I think uh, the department heard a lot about the absurdity of that and the challenge of getting a, keeping a mask on a, on a antsy preschool student for six hours. And so I think uh, I, I suspect we're going to hear that there's going to be some nuance to that mask policy or the mask guidance. But I think so, I think the number that we have here is, is a conservative estimate. We, you know, we'll have to monitor the guidance. We may not even need to go to the level that we've identified here.
Uh, any other questions? I'm clicking through the screens to see if I see a hand up, shout if you want to talk. Bronwyn?
I just wanted to say, I do think it's um, very wise decision, uh, Mr. Mazza mentioned trying to get the order in as soon as possible. Um, because some stuff could be, have a lot of lead time or a lot of people wanting it. So it totally makes sense to use the, to me, to use the FY twenty uh, budget money, that one thirty-seven, seven, two, three for this.
Anybody else? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the school committee approve the use of end of year funds to purchase desks and personal protective equipment in preparation for next school year and social distancing requirements.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote. Uh, Jamie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you. Um, we, if we could go back to a previous uh, agenda item, student rep report. Armin is back with us. Armin, what do you have for us?
Um, so during the past couple of weeks, um, Mr. Landers met with multiple student groups um, just to talk about students' experience with uh, racism and racist attitudes uh, at, uh, at the high school. So a few of the topics that were covered were um, the lack of African-American teachers at LHS or in the district in general. Um, and I believe the number's two, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, there are two African-American teachers in the district. Um, and also the lack of literature included in the English curriculum uh, written by people of color. And um, it was also discussed how a teacher should respond um, to a student who demonstrates racist attitudes in class um, to use it as a learning opportunity rather than a missed opportunity. Um, so I think it's an important discussion to have uh, in a district like Long Meadow uh, just to, you know, facilitate that discussion about these topics. Um, I mean, some of the problems can be solved with these, I think, but other ones like the lack of African-American teachers in the district, I mean, you can't really force people to apply. So I think that's, it's just important to be cognizant of that as an issue. Um, but yeah, it was definitely a good discussion to have.
That's great. Excellent. Thank you for adding that. Anybody have any comments or questions you wanna? Join Armin? Kevin?
Armin, thank you. I think this is a super important topic. Um, and I think it's really important as well to address these things in Long Meadow because for folks who go on to college, which is virtually everybody, uh, these issues become even more important. Um, and so I think having, having these discussions now will better prepare all of our students when they go beyond Long Meadow uh, to navigate what can be really difficult situations. And so I'm really happy to hear that you're having those conversations. So thank you.
Definitely, yeah.
Great. I've heard it said recently, someone said it's not good enough to just not be racist. You have to actively be anti-racist. So to hear that uh, students at the high school and the administration are having these discussions. Armin. Uh, we have an executive session on our agenda. If somebody would like to make this very lengthy motion?
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with bargaining with the People's Services Director, the Superintendent, collective bargaining with units A, C, D, E, and F, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session.
Is a motion is there a second?
Second.
And I have to read the motion again. The motion is that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with bargaining with the People's Services Director, the Superintendent, collective bargaining with units A, C, D, E, and F, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session. This requires a roll call vote. Nicole?
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Yes for me as well. We will now go into executive session and we will come back in a little bit. Thank you.
Welcome back to the meeting we're calling back in order, open session and announce the continued live streaming of the meeting by LCTV on channel 12 and the part of the meeting will be posted as soon as possible. We have new business.
Welcome back to the meeting we're calling back in order, open session and announce the continued live streaming of the meeting by LCTV. On channel twelve and the part of the meeting will be posted as soon as possible. We have new business, can I have a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the contract amendment for Ms. Jean Fontaine, Director of People's Services, which includes a 1.5% cost of living increase in terms of compensation for the 2021 fiscal year, as well as approval to increase a carryover of vacation days by five to be used over the course of the next two fiscal years.
What motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, for a roll call vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me as well?
For the superintendent's contract amendment, I move that the school committee approve the contract amendment for Dr. Marty O'Shea, Superintendent of Schools that includes a 1.5% cost of living increase in compensation for the 2020-2021 school year. I believe that's it, Tom, right? Or do I add the five day language?
That, I mean, that's up to the-
Okay, no, no, I just, I couldn't remember if I needed to, sorry, my fault, it's ten o'clock. As well as a, um, uh, carryover of vacation days to be increased by five, um, to be used over the course of the next two fiscal years.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn? Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me as well. Now we have, um, MOAs for A, D, E, and F.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement with Unit A and authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement with Unit D and authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me.
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreements with units E and F and authorize the chair to sign the agreements.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me. Our last item of business on the agenda is a revised 2020-2021. Someone gonna be speaking to that?
I can, I can take that, so, uh, with the MOAs that were just approved and, and that will be brought to the LEA, um, the plan is to capture some of the built-in professional development time and, um, reschedule that to the summer, so one of the days that we can move potentially to the summer is the April first Professional Development Day. Um, assuming that the professional development plan is enacted, that would allow April first to become a day of school. And so the draft calendar that is in your packet, uh, is reflective of this, if we would have, uh, April first to be a day of instruction, it would allow us to end the school year one day earlier. So that is in your packet, the new, the last day of school, uh, would be June fifteenth. With the five days that were required to build in for potential snow days, the last day would be June twenty-second, so we'd be ending on a Tuesday.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, Gianna.
Sorry, I know it's late, I just, was there any thought since we, since we have this incredible overwhelming, you know, need to, with all this planning and everything going into the fall, was there any thought to starting after Labor Day and just going later into June?
Uh, there wasn't any thought to that, um, I think if we were to, if we were to do that, um, I would want to pull back together the, uh, the calendar committee, uh, to evaluate that. I mean, it might be that the, uh, it might be that this calendar winds up getting revised and changed in light of any guidance that comes out or in light of any school closures that happen next year. I'm not sure, I'm not sure the dust is totally settled on our calendar for next year. If, if we have spikes with this pandemic, it could be that the Department of Education is gonna reevaluate the, uh, school year requirements.
Okay.
We didn't talk about starting after Labor Day. Problem with that would be that would bump us potentially into the last week of June and your contract with the teachers, I believe, says that every effort will be made to avoid scheduling into that last week of June, so.
Okay.
It, it would be, it would be tough to pull that off.
Alright, thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, just a quick point, I mean, uh, all the colleges are talking about trying to start earlier. Uh, and so, I mean, I think if we were gonna revise the schedule at all, um, worried about a second wave of the pandemic, we would start earlier than we're starting right now, I think starting later would be contrary to the advice that a lot of us have been getting. Um, so, I, I mean, I think we should start where we're starting.
Yeah.
Maybe the state would tell us to start earlier, but I don't think we're gonna see anything about starting later.
Yeah, the, the hundred, yeah, and the, the hundred and eighty day requirement might be up for discussion with Desi next year too.
Any other questions? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Alright, I got it, I got it, I got it. Alright, I move that the school committee approve the revised 2020-2021 school calendar as presented.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? We vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me as well. Anyone wanna make a motion?
Move that the school committee adjourn the June eighteenth, twenty-twenty school committee meeting.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nice job on your first meeting, Mr. Chair.
Way longer than it-
And welcome, Nicole.
Thank you.
Alright, we gotta vote though, Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me as well, thank you very much. See you next time, everybody.
Thanks, Ron.
Bye. Good night.